Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November the 10th. It's 9:00 AM in the Central Jury Room here in the Hood County District Justice Center, 1200 West Pearl Street. Today, we were scheduled to have Pastor David Samples from the Tolu Baptist Church to do the invocation, and I don't see him here. But, so, you wanna check out there right quick? Brother Webster? Let me see. If not, we'll have Lieutenant Colonel, who should've been a general, our esteemed Naval. Nobody? Okay. All right. Mike Scott, would you do the honors today? You wanna do the invocation?
Yes, sir. Happy to be here.
All right, good.
Pray with me, please. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today. We thank you for all these men and women that are here supporting Hood County and supporting our region, and we just thank you for this group of men and women that lead our community, and we just ask that you would bless the things that we do, Father, and that you would bless our nation and our county and our city. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Now, will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America, into a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Okay. Today, in place of special presentations, as we have none, Melissa Wilburne here will give us an up-to-date on revisions on the Hood County Employee Luncheon that is scheduled for Thursday, November the 19th.
Good morning. When I originally put this on the agenda, we were considering just revising our plans for the employee luncheon. Then the committee met, and we decided to just cancel the luncheon altogether at the direction of some others who felt like it was just gonna be too risky for all of us to meet together in one room. So, that's what we've done, is we've canceled the employee luncheon for this year, but we are still going to do the gift cards. So, we'll have a virtual drawing. We'll televise it through IT, and we're going to have four $100 gift cards, 40, $50 gift cards, and 24, $25 gift cards. This will be for our employees. Department heads and elected officials will not be included in the drawing.
Okay. No elected officials, so that people like Dave Eagle and Leann that are the luckiest people in the world, if there's a drawing, they'll win it.
Not this year.
Not this year. They won't win it this year. Okay.
And Melissa, just to mention, we did talk about potentially having a spring picnic or a get-together when springtime comes, so that's still in the works.
That's right. Yep. We are considering maybe end of April to mid-May, hopefully before it gets too hot, and we can avoid a rainy day and have a cookout.
I think it's a really wonderful thing for all the employees to get together. It's always joyful and really a wonderful thing to see the camaraderie in all the inner departments. I really loved attending.
I agree, and it was very difficult for us to make that decision, to just cancel it altogether, because we know how much it does mean to our employees, and so that's, as Commissioner Cotton said, that's why we're looking at the spring.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a comment. That is first I heard this, and this is a rhetorical statement. I'm not, I'm just, how long are we gonna do this? I'm just asking, how long are we gonna continue this? Thank you.
The next item here is that if any of the public, and we are definitely sent out here today, that would like to speak on any agenda item, Sheriff Deeds at the back has public participation forms. You can get one from him, fill it out, hand it to the county clerk, Katie Lang, and Katie will make a recording of it, put you in line, and then hand it to me, and I will call you at the appropriate time. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not...
I'll make that motion, then, Judge, to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. By the way, Commissioner Dever is ill today. That's why he's not here, and I can verify that he is ill, because yesterday was Melissa Wilburne's birthday. There was plenty of food and cake, and James Dever left without eating any of it.
Yep.
That is verification that our commissioner is ill, and so we wish him well. I don't know what he has, but we sure hope that he gets over it real quickly. Okay? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Kidd, financial.
And I'm here because there's nothing from development and road ops.
Oh.
That's okay.
I would be remiss if I wouldn't. Mr. Don Lenny, I'm glad to see you here. You did show up, but you didn't have anything. Mr. Clinthead, thank you for being here also. No development items. Okay, Becky Kidd.
Financial. For fiscal year 2020, the expenditures were $18,840.30. For fiscal year '21, $558,032.40. The auditor's office has reviewed all these invoices and recommends payment.
You didn't say $588, didn't you?
$588.
Okay. Judge, I'll make the motion, then, to approve the payments and invoices for fiscal year 2020 of $18,840.30, and then fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $588,032.40.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton for certification of payment of invoices, as stated. And here, second. Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay, under miscellaneous, hey, we're on the track to make up for these three- and four-hour commissioners' court meetings that we've been having for the last two or three months. Okay. Under miscellaneous, C1, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County Accident Prevention Plan and Policies, which will replace the Hood County Safety Handbook.
Good morning. You should have received a copy of our current safety handbook last Friday morning, and also what the Safety Committee is proposing to replace that safety handbook. We have some committee members here. If you have any questions, I think they would be able to answer them for you. If not, we'd be grateful if you would vote to replace our current safety handbook, which I don't think has been revised in about, probably, 10 years. So, TAC recommended that we do some revising and form a safety committee, which has been done.
Judge, I was on that committee, and basically what this is, is that we're moving some things out of the standard safety book, because we had some overlaps with road operations and even the police department, and there are the sheriff's office. So, we kinda cleaned it up. We really didn't add anything new, but I think we moved some things around that made more sense in the right book.
That's right.
And updated it. Okay.
And like I said, there's committee members here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any further discussion or comments? Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion, Judge, to approve the Hood County Accident Prevention Plan and Policies, which replaces the Hood County Safety Handbook.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the Hood County Accident Prevention Plan and Policies, which will replace the Hood County Safety Handbook, second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action regarding Texas Comptroller Check for $159,861.86 for unclaimed property. Whoa.
You may not need me up here. We just received a check in September for the same thing, and we put it in Fund 55. So, wherever you'd like for us to receipt it in, that's where we'll put it.
Well, we'd like to get it deposited, that's for sure, so nobody can take away from it. So, have you been in the order to discuss where y'all gonna deposit it?
I mean, Fund 55 is where we put it last time, so I'm assuming we're good with Fund 55.
Okay. Well, we usually deposit all checks that are made payable to Hood County, especially ones that are $159,000 or above. So, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yep. I'll make that motion, that we accept and deposit a check for $159,861.86 to be deposited in the magic fund of 55.
Our motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to deposit the Texas Comptroller Check for the unclaimed property in Fund 55. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Judge, can I ask a question about that? How long does it stay in the unclaimed property before it goes to the counties, or where it goes to?
Well, it depends. If it's in your case, or you just talk about in general.
This, huh? It's a little bit different. It's just capital gains. It's not really our unclaimed property per se. Okay.
Yours unclaimed usually will be two or three days before we would sell it.
Well, I have to go to the unclaimed property at least every other month, because I have interest in little bitty oil wells all over the country, and they end up in that, and I'm continually riding to the state, and I just am wondering, how long is it gonna stay in there before it goes away?
Is that, do they have oil and gas interest in this unclaimed property?
Anything that is not claimed by someone will go to unclaimed property?
But how long does it stay there before it goes back to the counties? That's what I'm asking. Okay.
I don't know, but that is a good question.
I don't think it's in there forever, over 10 years.
Over 10 years? Okay. I've just worked on it really hard, trying to get those $100 here and $50 here, but then I found one for $86,000 sitting there. Woo-hoo.
How much?
$86,000.
Holy smoke. Where'd you go find that?
I'm working on it.
Do you have any lunch plans today after this meeting?
It's an insurance policy for an oil company that I work for in New Mexico, that the savings thing, or something that came due, came up thing, and I'm trying to get that out of the unclaimed property. It's not easy.
You can look at, I think you can Google escheats, E-S-C-H-E-A-T-S, in Texas, because I think different categories of property have different time limits.
Okay.
And check that out, and you might be able to get some guidance there.
Thank you.
Good question, Ms. Fay.
I advise everybody to go on there and look regularly, because you never know what's there.
$86,000 is worth looking at. All right. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action authorizing the county judge to e-sign the 2020 Help America Vote Act, that's HAVA, Election Security Subgrant to Texas County, authorized by the U.S. Congress under the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2018 Public Law and U.S. Congress under the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2020 Public Law 116-93, which will provide a maximum award of $120,000 to, quote, "improve the administration of elections for federal office, including to enhance election technology and make election security improvements," end quote, "to the systems, equipment, and processes used in federal elections." The county is to match 20% on $80,000. So, who wants to discuss this? Well, let me say this, and I apologize...
We're giving $16,000 to get $120,000. I think that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that's what it is. And by the way, Michelle Carew had surgery last Friday, and she would be here but for recovering from that surgery. But this is for, from the federal government to all the states, and then deprovisioned out so that we should have, I'm like Commissioner Cotton here, pay $16,000 in order to get $80,000 or $120,000, really, on the deal. So, I'm in favor of doing that, and just putting it in the fund, and don't know what we're gonna do with it. I will say this, kinda tangentially here, that due to what has happened in Parker County with their security system and their download of all their computers and being ransomed or hacked on the thing, we have an appointment set up with Homeland Security Cyber that's gonna meet with Drew Whitaker and Owen this Friday, where they're gonna look at our systems and see if there's anything at all that can be made any more secure, or anything that anybody's overlooked. I really don't think they'll find anything. I certainly hope not, but if they do, this could be one source of money in the event that they would find something. So, anyway, I'm in for this, so...
We're eligible for this, because we, for us successfully completing that election security assessment that they did.
Correct. Which we got a very good grade upon, two, which was out of two, we got a 1.63, is that right?
Yes, absolutely. We got a 1.63 out of two, so I think we did exceptionally well.
Yes.
The best county in Texas made a 1.81, and of course, those counties have a total county budget way bigger than we do, hundreds of millions.
Got a lot more employees.
That's absolutely correct. So, I think we did absolutely exceptionally well.
Okay. Drew, what was the average county?
The average county in Texas, .75, and we were the last county tested. We actually brought the county, the Texas state average, up to .81.
Good for you.
So, I think we did well.
Good job. Good job. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize county judge to sign the, e-sign the 2020 Help America Vote Act Security Grant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner White to authorize the county judge to e-sign the 2020 Help America Vote Act, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the acquisition of two cellphones for the district attorney's office for newly hired attorney and investigator. Net cost of devices is $77.96. Total monthly service cost is $46.49 per phone, or $1,115.76 total yearly service cost. Look, you hear...
So, I'll make this real easy. We actually have two lines that are not being used that we currently pay for already, so I recommend if we can pull this, because we have two lines that we're already paying for.
How about the physical phones?
That is correct. We have two of them.
You've got those physical phones and the phone lines?
Yes.
We'll see. You already, we're already ahead of the game.
There you go.
You don't care where the phones come from, as long as they work, right, Mr. Sinclair?
That's correct. I was informed of that this morning. I've been working with Owen to get these two lines for my employees, but it doesn't sound like we need it, so we can move on.
We already have them.
Congratulations. Good work. Thank you all for working together on that.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to make the court aware of the Homeland Security Division CISA regarding vulnerability and risk assessment on our computer system. Whitaker.
Make this really, really easy. You already alluded to it, Judge. We've already done our, of course, election security assessment, which, even though its primary focus was on elections, it still did encompass the whole network and the whole county at large. However, it is always good to have a second set of eyes from a different company, or in this case, the government, to just kinda go over and double-check, and maybe they find something that the first company didn't. And of course, it's absolutely free, so we have that set up for Friday.
As I understand it, Parker County is still without their computer IT department. Am I right?
That is correct. They are still down.
And how long has it been?
Five weeks.
Five weeks. This is why this is so important and why we just want a second set of eyes. Congratulations on doing as well as you did on that test. I really applaud you for doing that, and also applaud Jay Webster and you for working together and getting this new cyber team to come out on Friday, the 13th...
Absolutely.
...to check again. I will feel a lot better if we pass this one, too. So, after that, I don't know what else we can do, except ask every employee in the county to please be ever vigilant...
Absolutely.
...and don't be clicking on to any unknown link.
Emails.
And that Drew will be setting you surprise tests.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Lenny, don't be up there clicking on that, you know? All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay? So, I guess we've already, so do I hear a motion to allow this Homeland Security Division check that...
Yeah, I'll make that motion, then, Judge, to allow the Homeland Security Division to check our assessment, risk assessment.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to allow Homeland Security Division CISA to take a vulnerability and risk assessment on our computer system, second by Commissioner White. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay. Next item, discuss and take appropriate action authorizing the county judge to sign contract with Databank for the conversion of voter registration files to digital format for the preservation of county documents to be funded by state-matched and authorized state cybersecurity grant funds from the Texas 2018 Help America Vote Act, HAVA, subgrant to Texas counties. This was previously discussed and then tabled, so do I have any further discussion regarding this item? As I understand it, this is just taken, again, this is something that Michelle Carew would be here to discuss, but what it basically is, is converting into digital form, paper voter registration, and getting all of it combined into a concise digital format. This includes even prior companies, if any of it had been done partially under digital, to go ahead and convert paper, partial, digital, or whatever, into one system, because this is very important about voter registration. We've all heard that there were some dead people voting in other jurisdictions, certainly not here in Hood County. So, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, I see that this comes out of the 2018 HAVA grant, so it hasn't got anything to do with the one that we just signed, just for clarity. It looks like we've already got that grant money coming in 2018. And with that, I'll make the motion to authorize the judge to sign the contract with Databank for the conversion of the voter registration files to digital format.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to authorize the county judge to sign the contract with Databank for the conversion of voter registration files to digital format for the preservation of county documents. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner, by County Judge Ron Massengill. So, we got a motion, and second, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, did you vote yes, Bruce? Did you abstain, or did you, you voted? Okay. Motion carries four zero.
That's a done deal.
Yeah. All right. Y'all just trying to trick me here on a Tuesday morning. I'm trying to be as bright as I possibly can here, you know? Okay. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action regarding Hood County judge signing a contract with Justice Benefits, Inc. Boy, that sounds like a organization you really have to look at. Anybody that's saying that they're dispensing justice, right, Fay?
Aye.
Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This company is a company we are already familiar with. We already have a contract with them for our SSI that relates to inmates in the jail that are on social security. This company finds the right protocol to let the government know at that point their benefits stop going to their home. We get $200 a month for that, and this company gets 22% of that. So, we would get nothing, but this way we get the difference of the 78% of the $200. Now, for this one, it's the Title IV illegal. They will investigate and turn in information regarding the salary benefits and health insurance for the employee that's handling the CPS cases. They will also, we will also be able to turn in the ad litem fees for CPS cases, and we will receive 78% of those funds. For last year, we had $112,150 in ad litem fees. The salary benefits, health insurance, and office expense for this employee was $117,385. If we received 78% of that, that would be almost $180,000. The only thing that we have to do is the employee logs in, I think, once a month, and says, yes, 95% of my time was spent handling CPS cases, and we run reports, our office does, to supplement the ad litem, to show what the ad litem cases are. I believe we might have to copy those. That's not gonna be a problem at all, and the treasurer might have to turn in some payroll information. That's our part for this money. Matt has looked this contract over. I visited with Nelda. I am almost certain that this is a sole source, that it cannot, so we wouldn't bid it out, but we will verify that. If there's an issue, we will bring it back to court. But at this time, I ask that you sign this, Judge.
So, subject to verification that this is a sole-source company, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Motion.
By Commissioner White to authorize the county judge to sign a contract with Justice Benefits, Inc., subject to verifying the sole service. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion and take, discuss and take appropriate action to renominate Trish Reiner to serve a second three-year term on the Council of Governments Regional Aging Advisory Committee. This term will begin on January the 1st, 2021, and expire on December 31st, 2023. Mrs. Reiner has expressed a willingness to serve another term. I understand we have two members from Hood County that's on this committee. The other one is the illustrious Mr. J.C. Campbell. So, I think we are well-represented here, and if Trish wants to serve another term, I think that she deserves it, and I'll make a motion that we renominate Trish Reiner to serve a second three-year term on the Council of Government Regional Aging Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Congratulations, Trish Reiner. Okay. Item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the memorandum of understanding between Hood County and Lipan Independent School District, Constable Delton Thresher. Yes, sir?
County Judge Commissioners, I'm here this morning at the request of, of the Lipan Independent School District to ask the court to consider signing a memorandum of understanding for assisting the school district with emergency management services, the sheriff's department, Jay Webster's office, the fire marshal and such. According to the requirements of the Texas School Safety Center on their safety and security audit, which I'm the committee member that performed the audit, they are required to have a memorandum of understanding... of understanding or a mutual aid agreement with any outside agency that assists them with any kind of duties, fire protection, working on the streets, whatever it is. They have to have these agreements in place to submit to the Texas School Safety Center at Texas State University. So they're asking the court to consider the memorandum of understanding for all the emergency management services that are offered up or performed by the, the county.
I think you discussed this matter with the sheriff, haven't you?
This is, this is a memorandum that has never been initiated, but they perform services up there. They patrol up there. They walk the halls. If there's a call with a disturbance with a student, they usually are the ones that respond up there. So it, there's another memorandum of understand, of agreement between the county and Road Ops, and that one is still pending. It's time to renew it. This is one that, once every three years, has to be renewed. This is the first time that they have had to come before the commissioners to ask for, uh, an, an agreement for emergency management services.
Already been do, or the county's already been doing all these services. They seem to have a signed MOU.
Yes, but we, we didn't have a MOU in place, and the Safety Center requires that there will be one signed by the County Judge and on file, which is all submitted with their paperwork to the, the center at Texas State University.
Good people of Lipan have a good representative in you, Constable Thresher. You're always looking out, and that's good, and they're part of Hood County. So do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to authorize the County Judge to sign memorandum of understanding between Hood County and Lipan ISD.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner White to authorize the County Judge to sign the memorandum of understanding between Hood County and Lipan Independent District, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next item, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County Game Room Regulations.
Judge Commissioners.
And Lieutenant Johnny Rose.
Yep. Johnny will be the one kind of overseeing this project, and over the years, we've had a lot of issues that have popped up with different game rooms, bingo parlor that, that's been quite a few years ago, but this is really one of the best ways we can see to control what goes on in Hood County as far as criminal activity. Unfortunately, these rooms pop up, the game rooms, and then they have a lot of drugs, alcohol problems associated with it, and that causes my deputies a lot of extra work and the citizens a lot of extra problems. So this original paperwork came from Tarrant County. They had their county attorney working on it. They've got it in place in Tarrant County. I sent it over to our attorney, our county attorney, Matt, and he's looked it over, worked it over, and changed up a little bit of stuff in here. And I know we just got it back on Friday, so, but I still wanted to be able to talk to you a little bit about it. And Johnny can hit some highlights on some things too, but I totally understand since you haven't really got to read it yet, then we can table it until the next time, but till the next agenda. But we're prepared to move forward and, and getting, getting things in place so we can help Hood County, and, and this is one of the best ways we can do that.
Yeah, real quick, let me explain why we need this. The gambling law is hard to prove because with game room investigations, I've got to set aside two to three investigators, and that's all they're going to do is work this sting with this game room. And you have to give them cash to go in and spend money on these eight liners because we have to prove that when you spend money on this eight liner, the owner gives you cash. Because under the law, the way it's written, they can't give cash. They're supposed to give a novelty item or some type of prize valued about five bucks. Well, they're not going to spend hundreds of dollars on this eight liner machine if they're just getting a novelty gift. So a trusted customer gets cash. So that's why you, you would send in the undercover officer or a CI, and you're spending county money to do this. So I don't like that as a, as a manager to spend, to waste county money, and then I've wasted resources on the investigators when they could be working crimes against persons or crimes against properties that are major crimes. Because at the end of the day, this, this gambling law is just a misdemeanor, and so you don't get much bang for your buck when it comes to this, this county resources. So this ordinance speaks the language of the game, uh, owner, game room owner. They understand money, and that's what this addresses. They have to do certain things or they get fined, uh, money when they're not complying. And, and basically, it would shut down the game rooms. They have to apply for the, the permit, and then they have a lot of hoops to go through because there's a lot of criminal activity at these game rooms. They do hand-to-hand dope transactions. They, they bring in stolen merchandise to fence. There's a lot of, it's a hub for criminal activity. So we need to have a way to address this because people are calling in to dispatch, and they call me, they call the sheriff all the time. Hey, they're gambling. You know, they're paying money out to these people. Well, it's hard for us to investigate that because it takes a lot of resources, like I explained. So really need this as a tool, if y'all would consider it.
So the game room owner, uh, when it becomes illegal is when they start giving out money?
Yeah, under the law, they, the state of Texas didn't do us any favors, the lawmakers. They wrote the law where it's kind of, there's a gray area where they can give a novelty gift with up to $5. Well, they're not doing that. If it's a trusted customer, they, they're giving them cash, but it's got to be a trust. That's why you have to send in CI's or undercovers to build trust. That's why it costs anywhere from 15 to three grand on an investigation. You're spending county money. I don't like that. I know y'all don't either, and the sheriff certainly doesn't like when I ask for, you know, three grand cash to, to give to undercover officers. That's not, it's not a good decision because at the end of the day, it's just a misdemeanor. You're spending, I'd rather spend that money on evidence processing with the ME's office, something where you've got a crime against a person, you know, an agassalt, murder. We could spend that money somewhere else, or a bulletproof vest, you know, at the least. So it's something, it's a tool. It, with, the lawyers understand this, the burden of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt with a criminal, uh, crime, but under the civil law, it's preponderance of the evidence. So it's easier to prove on a civil hearing about them violating these, these rules. So we really need this, and if y'all would consider it, we'd appreciate it.
Johnny, how many game rooms are there in this county?
Gosh, there's probably four, that, that's all they do. And in all these convenience stores, y'all been in, in, in the, like Crescent, they, they have these eight liners, and they're paying out cash. It's just we can't catch them.
There's been some talk of some new ones popping up in neighborhoods even, out in Oak Trail Shores, so we want to get on top of this and get this thing going. And as far as the money that Johnny was talking about, that wasn't taxpayers' money. That was forfeiture fund money, and I don't have a whole lot of that anyway. So that's all we had to spend in the past.
Yeah, and that's been a while. It's been a while since we ran a game room scam or sting. But it, I don't like them, and the sheriff doesn't either because it costs a lot of money to do it. And, and we, if we have to, we will, but it's just not cost-effective.
Johnny, what, do you think this is, passing this regulation, you're going to basically shut down the game rooms or clean them up?
Some of them are going to pull up stakes and leave because it's, it's going to become too expensive to go, jump through the hoops of this ordinance.
But if they-
And some, some may be able to do what they're supposed to do and maybe still make money. They're still going to be paying out cash, but it'll be our job to try to catch them when they're paying the customers cash. Because under this, they still can't pay cash to the customer.
It'll help us to work with them and control what we can. So it'll make it better for us. I won't be wasting a bunch of my deputy's time dealing with a lot of this stuff because we're going to have a, an ordinance in place that we can work with them and control that. So I think it's a great thing for the future.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good tool.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make that motion to approve the Hood County Game Room Regulations.
Okay, Commissioner. Cotton has made her motion to approve the Hood County Game Room Regulations. Do I hear a second?
And it won't hurt our feelings if you put it, postpone it for, for another agenda, just to make sure everybody's had a chance to read this, go over it.
I know I haven't, Sheriff.
Yeah, and so I'm totally, I want to make sure everybody's good. Commissioner Dever's not here today. Um, yeah, so that, it, it can be tabled until next time.
I'm not a guest here. I just wanted to be able to read it.
Any questions you might have, we need to get them all answered, so.
Mr. Mills, have you read this game room law?
He, he's been working, him and Vanessa have been working long and hard for about a month or so on, on the thing.
It's about 30 pages long, and I sent the sheriff an email, and I bullet pointed about seven different questions, and it was probably more than he expected to hear back, but we've gone through quite a bit and tried to not really make substantive changes, but just clean up some of the things that are inconsistent within the document. Uh, there's also a question about grandfather provisions. We're, we're putting in new regulations, and we're saying to the ones who've already been operating, you have to change things like your building requirements. So there's things, if you've read the document, about how the windows are supposed to be situated and built. Well, if you've already got one, and you've been operating for a year and a half, and now you're contrary to the thing that says your windows have to be a certain size and placement, now you've just run somebody out of business who might be doing theoretically legitimate game room. So there's a lot of things like that that we had to wrestle with and try to clean up and make it fair to the people who are trying to operate, in theory, a legitimate business. So, um, anyway, a lot of stuff to work through for sure.
Well, has Tarrant County approved a similar game room?
Yes, they're currently, you can't be within so many feet of a church, so many feet of a, of a school. That, that's good for the community right there. But yeah, we're going to get, if this passes, we're going to get with Tarrant County, and I'm going to send some investigators to train under that unit to figure out how they're running things and how they, how they operate.
So your investigators go train in Tarrant County?
Yeah, under the, the game room compliance unit that is currently dead. That, that's the only way to address this problem because Tarrant County has a lot of game rooms, and under the current law, they just couldn't address the issue. But this ordinance addresses the issue. It speaks the language. They understand that's money. And so that, that takes care of a lot of problems.
So you're trying to weed out the bad ones?
Yes.
And one, one other thing, just, sorry, I, I don't know if this is your mindset, Johnny, but rather than sending in people undercover with a bunch of money, there are some regulations in this proposal that an investigator could just kind of walk in and check audit-type things, check the physical setup of the building without necessarily doing undercover work and spending money to do it.
Yeah, that's correct. But we're, under this, the undercover would probably go away unless just extreme circumstances. But this one, they have to comply with the comptroller's office and have a tax stamp on that machine, which we're not, we're not enforcing because that's the comptroller's, uh, job. But under this ordinance, it is our job to go in to make sure those machines have a tax stamp. So if they're not complying with the comptroller's office, they're not, they're not abiding by this ordinance, so they're violating the ordinance.
It sounds to me like y'all've worked long and hard on this with Tarrant County and sheriff's office and everything else. I second Commissioner-
I read it. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I read it last night. You gave it to me yesterday morning, and I, I read it, but I'm not a lawyer, so. But there's a lot of, it's a, a lot of information in there on what and how you're doing, and the overhaul, I think it's a great thing. They give them a tool to, to help them out, is the way I've seen it. And that, I can't speak for the other commissioners that haven't read it, but, but I have, and I probably won't read it again.
It'll put you to sleep, right?
There's a little nuances in there also that you've got to really study it, and that's what I'm saying about using the expertise that Tarrant County has because they got a lot of attorneys up there in law enforcement that's done it. So that's where the subtlety's going to come in. So just me reading again, I'd rather get off and save some good innocent children and some wives some monthly money that should be going to them instead of going into a eight liner. So I second the motion. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of taking appropriate action to approve the Hood County Game Room Regulations, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. I abstained because I just haven't read it.
Okay. Okay, we got two for, one against, one abstaining, one absent.
What does Robert Rule say?
Doesn't pass, that's what it says. Say it doesn't pass.
Need at least three votes to get it passed, so.
Hey, no problem.
And I'm going to tag mine. I'm not against it. I just need to read it.
If you have questions, call me. It's a good tool, and yeah, this, this, this address at next meeting.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda for the next, next meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Johnny Rose. Okay, next item, item number 11, may convene into executive session pursuant to section 551.087 to consider a tax abatement request and proposal by West Camp Solar Project. So I guess at this time, we're going to convene into executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are now reconvening into Commissioners Court. It is now 10:55 AM, and we were in there discussing, um, the abatement request by West Camp Solar Project. And after all that discussion, do I hear anybody wishing to make an appropriate motion?
Yes, I, I would, I would like to make a motion. I move that we initiate the notice requirements under chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code to consider designating certain vacant land in southern Hood County as a reinvestment zone for the WCR Solar Project.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made and second to designate the reinvestment zone, and under chapter 312. Any further discussion?
It's not to designate it, it's to start the notice procedure.
To start the procedure, which will, the first thing to include, make sure that we get the proper notice in the newspaper. That's the big thing for this week. So all the proper procedures. I think. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay.